Good afternoon, everyone. This work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, August 6, 2020. On March 16, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Accordingly, due to health and safety concerns, this meeting is being conducted by video conference. The time is now 6:04 PM. Board Trustees present Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jenna Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to mute their microphones unless speaking. Thank you. Before we begin our meeting agenda tonight, I would just like to share a little message to our district from your school board president. I'd like to welcome everyone back for the 2020-2021 school year. I know many of you may be nervous and a bit uncomfortable about what this school year may bring. I understand, and if we're speaking candidly, I'm a bit nervous too. I understand we're living through a lingering virus that has proven to be very dangerous. To say that things are different would be an understatement, but to say that God is good would be true. So on the other hand, I have this indescribably joy, excitement about what is about to happen in Spring ISD. I can't remember a year that I have been more excited about and more grateful for. Plato once said that necessity is the mother of invention. Last spring and this summer, Spring ISD, along with the rest of the world, was forced to adapt to unprecedented times and meet the necessities that this time demands. If you are not a part of the world of education, you might think that educators have summers off. I want to let you know that Dr. Watson, his cabinet, Spring ISD administrators, counselors, teachers, and all departments of Spring ISD spent the past few months working harder than ever before. Amidst daily updates and changes from the federal, state, and local government and health officials, the Spring ISD team met the demands of each necessity with thoughtful insight, purposeful and intentional research, collaboration, and ultimately creative solutions and invention. Plato would be glad to know that Spring ISD got it right. Throughout the summer, Mrs. Dawn O'Neal and her communications team coordinated town hall events that allowed all Spring ISD stakeholders to voice their concerns. I want to ensure you that Dr. Watson heard you and thought long and hard about what you said. Each of our concerns and educational mandates prompted Dr. Watson and his team to action. I want to assure you that under Dr. Watson's leadership and guidance, Dr. Hill and Mrs. Westbrook have worked in tandem to make sure that schools and teachers have all they need to be actively and effectively engaging all students in the learning process while keeping everyone healthy and safe throughout the upcoming school year. Most importantly, I want to assure you that Mrs. Bradford and her team of curriculum and instructional experts have worked diligently with administrators and teachers to design an instructional plan to empower all students. Look out, the teachers and staff of Spring ISD are about to launch a robust virtual learn experience like no other. We may have to learn through virtual classrooms for a few weeks, but I am confident that the learning process will continue without missing a beat. And through all these difficult times, remember, this too shall pass when we're able to safely gather in person. I want to assure you that Dr. Watson has made sure that Mr. Miranda and his team have gone above and beyond the federal, state, and local requirements to ensure all health and safety protocols and have put processes in place to create clean, productive learning and work environments for all students, faculty, and staff members throughout every Spring ISD building. I also want to ensure you that Chief Kilbert and his team have put in place all protocols to keep our students, faculty, and staff members safe throughout the school year. Watching all of this come together over the summer is the spark of my joy and excitement. I can proudly tell you that I have confidence that Dr. Watson and all of Spring ISD is ready to meet and defeat any of the challenges that COVID has to offer. And parents, this brings me to you, and I should not say really us, because we're all in this together. In the spring, I saw many of you step up to a call of action. I saw many of you convert your homes to classrooms and dove right into teaching and learning student and yourself. On behalf of the Spring ISD Board of Trustees, I would like to thank you and applaud your efforts to partner as co-teachers with the Spring ISD staff. I know it was hard, and many of you may be thinking, here we go again, but let me assure you, this school year will look different from last year. Spring ISD is ready to actively engage your students through an empowering virtual learning experience. They are prepared and eagerly waiting to build virtual relationships with you and your students as we grow and learn together. So I want you to go into this school year with confidence, confidence that your students are in good and capable hands of experts. I want you to have confidence that we all are in this together and we're entering a partnership in which we will see each other through. You can have confidence that this school year has launched us into a new level of education for all. Dr. Watson, thank you for your leadership, and thank you to my other school board trustees for your patience in letting me share this meeting. So at this time, let me begin our scheduled meeting. The first order of business is to review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the June 4, 2020 boardwork session, the June 9, 2020 regular meeting, the June 23, 2020 special call session, the June 29, 2020 special call session, or the June 30, 2020 special call session? Okay, hearing none, these items will be submitted as a part of the consent agenda at the August 11, 2020 Board of Trustees regular meeting. We will now hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and other trustees. Good evening. It's great to be with you all in our community as we get ready to start another school year. Now, as we know, the start of the school year is going to be a little different than previous years because all of our students will be starting in the empowered learning at home model for the first four weeks due to the level of COVID-19 in our community and our attendance areas. But I do want to say a very special thank you to our entire Spring ISD team who has worked around the clock since March to ensure a successful start of the 2020-2021 school year. Over the past two weeks, we've really been busy hosting staff and community town hall meetings to ensure everyone is aware of our planning for the start of the school year and the safety protocols that we've developed. In addition, I was able to share our plan with the Greater Houston Partnership, Channel 13 News, and the Texas Black Caucus. This week, our family and community engagement team hosted parent sessions, and these sessions were done in English and Spanish aimed at really helping our parents learn how to navigate Schoology, our learning management system, as well as our home access center. Our first session was completely full. We had waiting room only, and so they've scheduled additional sessions for this next week. But in addition to that, our face department also hosted two information sessions with our minister alliance and our community business partners, which provided an opportunity for me to present our reopening plan as well as share some important information and answer their questions as they are sharing our vision throughout the community. So I want to say a very special thank you to Dr. Hannah Hossa and her team for setting all of those engagements up for me to be able to share our vision with our community. Now, to date, we have 16,597 parents. Again, that's 16,597 parents, which represents 31,128 of our 35,000 students who've responded to our survey requesting their decision regarding the safety first in-person or the empowered learning at home models. Now, currently, that represents about 34% of our families that are requesting the safety first in-person model of learning for their kids, and then that's about 66% are requesting the empowered learning at home model for their kids. And so I was really giving you all an update as to we're about 66% versus 34%. Now, last week, the 2020 registration process also began, and as I'm sure many of you have heard, we've had a few phone calls. Actually, we've received numerous phone calls regarding the registration process in our schools, our help desk, as well as our central office administration. We're continuing to provide support to parents as they experience difficulty, primarily with logins. And we've had a lot of parents call in wanting to figure out how to get their logins reset. They don't remember their pass codes, and so we've been really working with them throughout that process. In recognition of these challenges, we have extended the deadline to complete the registration process through August 31. It's important to understand is that parents are not totally starting over. They're updating their information, just making sure that their phone numbers and email addresses are the same as we go throughout the beginning of, as we start the beginning of the school year. So then all students will receive their schedules as well as other important updates and information to start the school year on August 17, even if the online information is not complete. So we are going to give parents a little bit more time to get that information or the updates that we normally send home on the first day of school in a big packet. We're going to give them more time to get that done online. Our agenda tonight is pretty straightforward with a presentation of our annual report from our SHAC committee as well as the curriculum update as we enter into the new school year. Now, just recently, our communications team developed school-level appropriate videos. They're going to be shared with our families to provide them a glimpse of how our protocols that we share with them in the town halls will be implemented. So if we could take a few minutes, I'd like to take an opportunity to show the elementary video that parents will receive at the elementary middle and the high school level on their campus websites. Once again, I thank you Tiffany and the members of your team for creating the videos for us. That gives our parents a glimpse of seeing the practices in a PowerPoint versus being able to see how it really looks. And of course, our little models, our student models that we had to actually run through that, they were great. So once again, thank you. That does conclude my report for this evening, Ms. Newhouse. I turn it back over to you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Our next item on the agenda is the 2019-2020 School Health Advisory Council Annual Report. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief Innovations and Equity Officer, Dr. Lupita Hannah Hossa.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse. We are going to be on page 25. And so, good evening, Ms. Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to present to you our annual School Health Advisory Council update. So as you all know, you see us every year, the Texas Education Code requires that every district establish a local school health advisory council. The SHAC's responsibility is to assist the district in ensuring that our local community values are reflected in the district's health education program. And in addition, on an annual basis, the SHAC must present to the board their annual report. So tonight, we have two co-chairs who will be presenting our 2019-2020 annual SHAC report. So with us tonight, we have Ms. Carmen Correa. She's the parent co-chair, and also Ms. Trinida Carroll, and she is our staff co-chair. So please allow me the opportunity to present my screen so that Ms. Correa and Ms. Carroll will be able to do our presentation tonight. Hi, Jeremy, I can see you on the screen. Can you see the presentation?
Yes, I can see it.
And Ms. Correa?
Ms. Correa and Ms. Carroll, you're both muted just a while.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Hello, good evening, and thank you for your time. I also want to thank Trinida Carroll and Dr. Hannah Hossa for allowing me to present this evening. Well, thank you, ladies. As Dr. Hannah Hossa said, my name is Carmen Correa, and I'm the parent co-chair of Spring ISD School Health Advisory Council. First slide, please. Our work. SHAC is a state mandate for every district with the basic tenet to create a healthy school environment. Our mission statement, created in 2017, is to ensure that all students have healthy bodies and minds, display good character, and are ready to learn, contribute, and lead in today's global society. The goal of SHAC is to assist Spring ISD in ensuring that local community values are reflected in the district's health education and provide recommendations regarding policies and procedures that impact student health through an annual report to you, the Board of Trustees. This year, we were able to introduce a new SHAC logo, which will be used on all of our correspondence. This gives SHAC an identifier for our members and better visibility to the community. As an example, students who attend this Saturday's Free Immunization Day will receive free backpacks with flyers that include information with the new SHAC logo as a show of support for this important health initiative. Key accomplishments. In this past December, SHAC participated in the Winter Wonderland Literacy Event for the first time. As board members, I know you're all familiar with this event and the success it has achieved over the last five years. We selected "Breathe Like a Bear" by Kyra Willie, which includes 30 mindfulness exercises for kids to feel calm and focused no matter the setting. We collaborated with our high school National Honor Society students to be instructors. They led many sessions with individuals and families on floor mats and with fun props. The children and families that participated really enjoyed the exercises, and we're definitely looking forward to participating this next year. Each year, we have a specific focus, and if you remember from our last presentation, our main priority for the last year and a half was share tables. You asked great questions and gave us a lot of excellent feedback regarding the policies and procedures, application process, selection criteria, and number of schools. We took your recommendations and implemented share tables at two pilot campuses, Ponderosa Elementary and Twin Creeks Middle School. The application process ran through the first semester of last year, ending in December 13, when we announced the pilot schools. We selected these two schools partially because we wanted schools on opposite sides of the district and because of the existing relationships myself and the previous parent chair, Claudia Curda, had with those schools since we also had children attending. Campuses were trained by child nutrition staff on food handling and safety procedures. Child nutrition worked with both campuses to get everyone food handler certified by spring break with the goal of starting the pilot after the children returned. Equipment was secured to store dry goods as well as cold items, which included mini refrigerators, carts, bins, and tables. Staff members were selected to monitor the tables during lunch periods. Policies were put in place that allowed SHAC members to help as much as possible in the first two weeks of rollout with monthly check-ins thereafter. We wanted to make sure that the pilot schools understood that we were accessible and ready to assist with any questions or concerns. Parent engagement in our work. We were very excited to announce our pilot, which was pushed out through social media and in our district newsletter. You'll see on this slide and the next two slides, parents, faculty, and community members collaborating in what we called our prize patrol. We delivered signage and balloons, and Harris County Public Health members donated swag bags as a way to show our appreciation for their commitment to the share table pilot. Here's a larger photo of our visit to kick off the pilot at Ponderosa Elementary. This photo is also a microcosm of the work it took to see this pilot move forward. It required buy-in from the principals and counselors, support staff, parents, and community members like Harris County Public Health, who are members of our SHAC, to make it successful. This was our visit to Twin Creeks. We had big smiles and a lot of excitement. Then COVID happened. We were just getting share tables off the ground. The kids went to spring break and never returned back to the campuses. And here we are today, making adjustments on the fly, as is everyone while we learn how to navigate our new norms. Being the health crisis that COVID is and how it affects schools in particular, many families in the district will be looking to Spring ISD for guidance. In that vein, SHAC wanted to assist the district and community in a way that promoted safety and health while continuing to give SHAC visibility and meet state requirements. Out of this was launched our summer mask campaign. With all of the confusion and uncertainty, SHAC wanted to help solidify the importance of mask wearing while also offering something fun and relatable to the kids. This is our Mask Avengers campaign. We sent this out through Twitter, including the hashtags #MaskUpSpringISD to match the wider global community hashtag campaigns of #MaskUpHouston and #MaskUpAmerica. Posters and flyers will be shared with principals to incorporate into their smores newsletters as well as integrating them as a planning component for teachers during in-class COVID guideline introductions. We're also collecting photos of families participating in this campaign, which will be sent out as additional motivational support. We really want to push this campaign for a multitude of reasons, but more specifically to help prepare kids upon return to class when that happens. Please reshare this campaign on your social media and help us gain more traction. Dr. Hannah Hossa, do you want to share the PSA now?
Dr. H, is there supposed to be sound with that video?
Yes, there is.
Let me get back on the presentation.
Just in short, that was a short little PSA that was put together by a family from Benneke, and it was just a nice little jingle and catchy tune to get kids on board with putting their masks on. Priorities for 2020 and 21. Looking forward, our priorities for SHAC will focus on the following. We want to ensure students participate in recess and physical activity during remote learning. We're working with Lori Carroll, Physical Education and Health Coordinator and SHAC member, to provide strategies and support for daily 30-minute minimum physical activity during remote learning. SHAC has 10 modules to serve as an advisory council over. We chose to focus in the upcoming year on the family engagement module and the community involvement module. We will do this by creating greater visibility, making updates to the student handbook, beefing up our website, internet presence, and looking at different communication strategies to get families and community members more engaged. In collaboration with the Family Engagement Department, SHAC will assist in creating a family curriculum or series that addresses the social and emotional well-being of families and students. We currently have a great selection of workshops for families, but they aren't really connected. This curriculum will bridge that gap by creating a cohesive series that is intentional and systematic. SHAC will help to build this out in an advisory capacity and by being a connection to additional resources. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time. It's the end of our presentation. I would also like to encourage, once we get our meeting dates scheduled and posted, I'd like to encourage the board members to attend our SHAC meetings and just kind of see how we do what we do. So thank you for your time this evening, and we'll open it up to any questions, I believe.
Thank you, Ms. Correa.
Ms. Correa, this is Debbie Jensen. I have a question. What was your "Breathe Like a Bear" activity? I'm very interested in that one.
So, I think I had the book. The book, it's a really cute illustrated book, and it had different activities in there, and it was like snake breath, flower breath. It was all nature-related themes, and for example, the flower breath was, you had to pretend like you were holding a flower, and you were gently blowing on the flower petals. And as you're doing that, you're training the kids to breathe in a certain way, breathe out a certain way, and you just repeat that. And each of the exercises were for helping to wake you up, helping to focus your attention, if you hit the wiggles out, you know, different situations.
Thank you, because I know that during this COVID pandemic quarantine I've been through, there's times that deep breathing has helped me calm down quite a bit. So I'm glad the kids are learning that as well. I'm so sorry that your share tables didn't have a chance to really go. I don't know if there's any way that we can find some version of it as the year goes on, but I just think that's such a wonderful idea, and I know we all appreciate so much what the SHAC meeting does and all of you volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, Ms. Correa and Ms. Carroll. I really appreciate how you all have taken this sort of state mandate. We get lots of mandates from the states, an unfortunate number of them unfunded, but you all are not just checking a box on this. I'm really impressed with your commitment to quality program, and I will echo what Dr. Jensen said about "Breathe by Bear." I was fortunate this year before everything shut down to participate in some professional development where I learned about the positive impact of mindfulness in students and how it, learning how to cope in different stressful situations and... situations and having those tools pays all these extra dividends in terms of their learning and their growth and development. So, I thank you for that program.
Thank you.
And this is Trustee Durant. I also want to echo my colleagues' comments and thank both you and Ms. Carroll for making the shift so quickly and still being able to deliver on quality programs and opportunities for our students, even when we had to shift from an onsite environment to home. You didn't miss a beat, and you continued to provide them with what they needed. And I just want to commend you and thank you for your support of our students and all your hard work.
Thank you.
And Ms. Correa, we look forward to your working again in the 2021 school year with our students and sharing a table. We know that we're going to be back one day, but that's a beautiful program. But going into the homes and helping our students, you guys are such a benefit and an asset to Spring ISD, a true asset. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and members of the board. We do have a very strong and active Shaq committee, and we are very fortunate. So, as Ms. Correa said, we've established the priorities for this coming school year, and please look for the dates, because we do and want to be able, as soon as we can get back in person, bring everyone back together. Right now, our meetings will be remote, but we've got a very good team ready to start working and supporting our district. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Correa and Ms. Carroll. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies, and thank you, Dr. Hannah Hossop. Our next item is the Spring ISD EdCamp and Curriculum Update. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief Academic Officer, Katar Bradford.
Yes, good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. We will be on page 27 of your board packet this evening. And tonight, we have an update of our summer professional development that we offer through an EdCamp format, as well as an update on our curriculum design. And so, because EdCamp is teacher-centered professional development, so it's for teachers and by teachers, we have two phenomenal Spring ISD educators who will be presenting this section for you all tonight. And so, you can go ahead and unmute and turn on your cameras. I'd like to introduce you to John Martinez, a special education, actually structured learning teacher at Reynolds Elementary, and Ms. Jennifer Richard, a science teacher at Bama Elementary.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here with you today. Today, we're excited to share with you about EdCamp Spring and what a smooth, successful, and meaningful experience it was. My name is John Martinez. I'm a silk teacher at Reynolds Elementary and the Spring ISD Elementary District Teacher of the Year. With me this evening, I have the great, brilliant Jennifer Richard, fifth grade team lead for the Bama Bulldogs. The key to EdCamp Spring was that it was not just a single-day event. It was a four-day virtual camp for teachers run by teachers. From Monday, July 20th to Thursday, July 23rd, we offered six daily courses for EdCamp. Prior to this week, a group of educators led by Jennifer Richard, Joshua Gilman, and others reached out to see what sessions teachers thought would be offered by sending out an interest survey to all Spring ISD staff. We brainstormed, submitted proposals, and got to work right away. The importance of this is that, as it said above, this made it meaningful work of teachers teaching each other about different things that we experience in our classrooms. In education, we lean on each other to help through difficult times, and this was a great way to showcase such collaboration. EdCamp was not required. It was an informal voluntary professional development, which made it so special. If you could go back one slide, please. Thank you. Every teacher who was at the sessions was there because they wanted to be, and we saw literally hundreds of teachers attend. Due to this, we had more buy-in from teachers than I had ever seen in a single professional development session, let alone four days' worth of sessions. In fact, it was so popular that we're offering all the same courses again on the District Choice Day, August 11th.
EdCamp is a professional community created by educators for educators. Educators were given the opportunity to create professional development trainings and share their expertise on certain topics with their professional colleagues. The EdCamp Professional Development Trainings helped prepare Spring ISD educators for synchronized and asynchronous learning.
EdCamp is the leading edge of professional development. It showed a new wave of just how powerful the art of collaboration is. The camp showed us that teachers need teachers. Teachers love to continuously work on bettering themselves, and most of all, virtual can work when done correctly. I saw a few sessions where teachers used Padlet, Google Forms, Kahoots, and other forms of innovative technology. For a brief moment, we got a glimpse into the student eye, and that made learning powerful.
Next slide, please. The members of the EdCamp Leadership Team created a brief survey soliciting the feedback of Spring ISD educators as it relates to professional development. The EdCamp Professional Development Sessions focused on skills and topics requested by educators during their recent survey. Topics for any given session range from technology tools, instructional strategies, best practices, and much more. Next slide, please.
I'll attempt to keep this part as brief as I can, but there are so many highlights I could carry on for days. So, where to begin? This is an outstanding, unique opportunity for teachers to reconnect with each other as educators to ensure the best possible opportunities for meaningful learning, not only for us, but for our students. We have all sat in a session where we're not sure it pertain to us, but EdCamp sessions were selected to create meaningful opportunities to learn from each other, and that was a beautiful thing. For example, I led sessions on accommodations and modifications for inclusion students. I was able to gear my session towards what I had heard confuse as teachers, as well as what I see teachers struggle on in their classrooms. As a special education teacher with years of experience with autism, I was able to pass on words of wisdom. Each session was carefully designed to address real issues that we see in the classroom. Executive Director of Workforce Development Diana Kimberly stated that she is excited to see the district facilitating a collaborative approach to professional development, and I could not agree more. Collaboration is the essence of education. We, as educators, are like gear in a car. One cog is set in motion, and that triggers the next cog, and the next, and the next, and so on. If one staff member does not work properly, it throws off the school ecosystem. By collaborating through professional development, we're keeping the gears turning and the school system on the right path. Joshua Gilman, a science teacher at Reynolds Elementary, stated, "We must prepare for the possibility of online learning," and y'all, as we know, it's here. "The virtual event put us in the eyes of the student. We found out that it may be difficult to sit in front of a screen all day, but through the presenters, we also saw how to use, again, Kahoots, Padlet, and other vital interactive sites. We can keep students engaged and ready to learn. We saw firsthand just how fun virtual learning can be." Jennifer Richard, my co-presenter and the fifth grade teacher and team lead at Bama Elementary, stated that she was impressed at the response from teachers offering to help. She said, "It's pretty awesome that there are educators within the district that are experts in these areas, and they're willing to share their knowledge with their colleagues. We all, as fellow teachers, have different areas of expertise. We cannot be selfish with what we know, and we must be able to share our knowledge. We're all lifelong learners. It's important that, like an ecosystem, we plant new information, water collaboration, and grow a community." One last highlight I would like to share is that this event was 100% virtual. Y'all, we did it. We showed that virtual can be meaningful. We showed that just because we're not in a school does not mean that we will be distracted and not effective. Welcome to what could be the future of professional developments, where we can have teachers teaching teachers and working hard to make sure that our students get the best possible education. "Every Child 2020" was not just a catchy phrase, and we're working hard to ensure that we reach every single child that walks into our schools.
Given the unprecedented times in our society and the unique needs of educators, Chief of Curriculum and Instruction Katar Bradford and Executive Director of Workforce Development Diana Kimberly saw a district need for facilitating a collaborative approach to professional development. In order to bring their vision to life, they needed a team of professional teacher leaders under their wings. Several principals across the district gave recommendations of teachers that would be a perfect fit for the team. The members of the EdCamp Leadership Team are Katar Bradford, Diana Kimberly, Joshua Gilman, Jennifer Richard, Melissa Tejada, Ashley Dodd, Jim Alexander, Cynthia Munson, Jordan Carpenter, and Lashandra Smith. Next slide, please. The EdCamp sessions were created based on the interests and needs of Spring ISD educators. We believe the number of engaged participants increased because we provided them with topics they felt were important for their professional practice and student achievement. This is essentially important because educators need to know their voices and opinions matter. Professional development topics can change based on the needs of our educators and students. The EdCamp Leadership Team will continue to give our educators the opportunity to voice their opinions and needs regarding professional development. The current EdCamp sessions that are being provided to our educators are: Deep Dive into Schoology, Accommodations and Modifications, Guided Reading, Near Pod, Culturally Responsiveness in Education, Google Classroom, Lesson Planning Made Easy, and Layered Curriculum. We would like to take the time to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share our highlights of EdCamp during this evening's board meeting.
Thank you. That was phenomenal, and I'll open it up to questions.
I have a question, Ms. Bradford. They talked about the participation they got from teachers. Do you have any hard numbers on numbers of teachers, percentages of our staff? And then I have one more follow-up question.
I do. I'll have to send that to you. I don't know Jennifer or John if you have it with you, but no, we did have a daily check-in and a survey at the end, so we collected the attendance, but I can get you the numbers of participation. And then we're repeating the sessions on the 11th, so if any teachers want to attend those sessions and didn't go over the summer, they're able to enroll in them.
Okay, so that leads me to my final question. I know we spend a lot of time making sure that all of our kids had sufficient technology, had devices, had Wi-Fi connections. I'm wondering about the teachers and whether we have made sure that they have computers and cameras and good Wi-Fi, because I've been in lots of Zoom meetings where, you know, the folks' Wi-Fi connection wasn't the best, and that interferes with any app that they're trying to use. I just want to, you know, make sure that we're taking care of teachers as it relates to that.
Definitely. So, teachers do have access to, you know, devices. We also are opening, you know, campuses up, so if teachers want to come in and utilize our school buildings, they definitely can. I know even, you know, the Wi-Fi could be strong in the morning and then go out in the afternoon, so our schools are available for teachers to utilize, and they all do have access to a personal laptop.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez and Ms. Richard, thank you so much for designing a professional development experience where the teachers get to share their expertise with each other. I did professional development for about 15 years with a couple of universities, and I can tell you that I used to inform people that the teachers were teaching each other as much as I was teaching them, and I had some upset people who thought, apparently, that I was supposed to be the sage on the stage and impart all learning, which was ridiculous with all that expertise that was in the room. And just a really powerful model you have there. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
This is Trustee Durant, and I just want to comment that experience is the best teacher. And to actually have the teachers that are in the classroom with that experience, being able to share those experiences, to me, is phenomenal. And I just wanted to ask, what were, what would you say was maybe the top highlight? If you could share a little bit about what you think went over well and what you'd like to see repeated?
Yeah. I know for me, the highlight was, as I mentioned earlier, it was just that teacher buy-in. When I heard that we were doing an event over the summer, I thought that was going to be really powerful, like you said, of teachers teaching each other. But I was like, yeah, it's summer hours. Who knows how many people are actually going to show up? But the highlight to me was that we had all of those teachers show up. I know my first session had at one point 115 people in it.
Wow.
Which was phenomenal, and that's something that I would love to see again, is the ability for the teachers to be able to propose what we thought other teachers needed to hear about. And the fact that I was able to go to Ms. Richard and Mr. Gilman and all them and say, "Hey, I see these sometimes get confused in the classroom. Let's do a session on this," and they said, "Sure, run with it." So, that's what I would like to see to keep going, that teachers bring what they think would be the most meaningful, and the leadership team on this project said, "Yeah, let's do it."
So, to piggyback off of what Mr. Martinez was saying is that we did definitely get buy-in from the educators because we gave them the opportunity to voice what they needed professionally and what was going to help them create a successful environment for their students. And another important thing is, when educators are reflective, they take their reflective practices, and they can share that with their colleagues. And so, that information can be poured into any professional development that's going to help.
Fantastic. Well, I would like to know what we as a board, and I know I'm speaking for my colleagues, can continue to support this initiative, because this is amazing, and I think it's critical to let them set the stage and the agenda, because they know what they need. And so, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard and Mr. Martinez. I really appreciate you all, and we talk about empowering students, and we also believe in empowering teachers. And so, thank you all for joining and sharing that. To continue along with our presentation, I'm going to have Dr. Parisso, Dr. Matt Parisso, bring to you all an update on our curriculum and instruction. He's our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and really talk about the work that we are launching to really ensure that we have engaging and rigorous instruction delivered every single day for our students. And so, Dr. Parisso.
Good evening, President Newhouse, members of the board, and Dr. Watson. I'm excited to share our curriculum update with you tonight. Our approach is that empowered learning. It really is so essential to find that student voice and really design curriculum around what our students need and want. And every year, Dr. Watson meets with students, and they share with him. They said the same messages, "Engage us, challenge us, and prepare us for life." And we're excited to share that that's exactly the foundation for our curriculum. It is student-centered at its very core, and then we build in the supports to ensure that teachers have the tools they need to make the difference in the classroom every day. The curriculum is designed around the empowered learning model that came about last year, and as we brought stakeholders in, including parents, students, teachers, administrators, and also staff at the central office, to design what is learning in Spring ISD. And so, you can see that call to action, which really pulls right from our Every Child 2020 plan. And so you can see that call to action, which really pulls right from our Every Child 2020 plan. We have those metrics of what we want to see as a result of our curriculum implementation and instruction. We have identified best practices that teachers should be utilizing and activities that students should be engaging in that result in that portrait of a graduate or what we call the learner profile. And that students are utilizing these skills and they're leaving prepared for whichever path in life they would like to go. And so again, all about empowerment. At its core in our curriculum, there's foundational elements. Many of these pieces are going to look familiar to you, and they're pieces that you as a board have challenged us with ensuring are part of our curriculum and part of the day-to-day instruction for our students. And so, you know, things like technology integration, arts integration, the scaffolding for students who may be in special programs or even students who are just struggling on different concepts. And so all of these pieces are integrated into our curriculum and there are supports available for teachers. That model itself starts with ignite, right? They said, students said engage us. And so that every day it's about igniting their interest and their passions, connecting, helping discover for themselves and also connect to the content so that they can actually apply it in real-world application as well as in traditional assessments. And through all of those pieces, they are reflecting and adapting and learning. Now, on top of our foundation of empowered learning, this year we have some new challenges, and we wanted to make sure that we integrate in the curriculum the opportunities for instruction to be delivered in any format to students, whether they choose empowered learning at home, like we're starting the year, or safety-first instruction that happens in the classroom. And so we are excited that we've looked into, you know, we've integrated in the curriculum the resources necessary to ensure that instruction is high-quality and equitable across the board, regardless of the choice that parents make for their students. The state, these are the state definitions, so you may have seen these before with remote synchronous instruction. That's that two-way, real-time, live, virtual instruction when students are not on campus. We also have remote asynchronous instruction, and that's what, that doesn't require having the instructor live like we are today, live. It can be recordings. It could be different activities and assignments that students are engaged in. And so as we build these resources into the curriculum, you know, we're ensuring that there's the opportunities for both synchronous and asynchronous. We don't want students sitting on a computer for six hours a day. And so there's lots of resources and activities that they will engage on offline, so that all their time is not in front of us. And this probably looks familiar because we just discussed it as part of our EdCamps. And just like EdCamps offered that synchronous and asynchronous, it's part of that remote blended learning for students as well. We have looked at adding some additional tools to ensure that, you know, things that we did in the classroom, we can do them online as well, just in a little bit different ways. And we want to continue those collaborative experiences and making sure that students are engaging with each other, not just the submitting assignments and with the teacher. So in an overview of what our curriculum update is for this year, it really comes down to these major buckets. So you can see that standards-based curriculum. All of our curriculum is tied directly to the TEACs as outlined by the state of Texas. All of that, that instruction has the standards at its core for every single class. So when a student comes into spring and they go to that third grade math, the instruction they are receiving is third grade math as identified by the state of Texas, and they're, they're getting empowered through that, through some very engaging activities designed by our teachers. We also have curriculum assessments that are testing, looking at that formative data to say, to see how students are doing along the way. The standards-based curriculum piece has four main units or components. There are the year at a glance, really kind of an overview of the standards by unit throughout the year. There's also the scope and sequence, which we'll take a look at in a second and kind of, it shows the standards as well as the big ideas for that students need to master. We have the curriculum map that explains the rationale for why is it that this standard is taught at this, at this moment? And then we have the unit guides, which are really tools for teachers to utilize and pull from different activities, resources, and lesson ideas as they design that daily instruction for their students. So assessments this year, we do have, we use checkpoints every three weeks, and they are aligned, you know, it's to like a Star EOC-style assessment question. And so those will occur every three weeks. We also have optional assessments that we've built that for non-Star-tested area. And all of those have been integrated into Schoology, which is our learning management system that was discussed earlier. And that we will continue to have our DFAs and benchmarks as we've done in the past and utilize our map as our screener as for, for reading and math in our elementary and middle school levels. On top of that, we also have ongoing professional development and resources for all levels. So we are continuing the strong training for campus leadership, teachers, coaches, and also for parents. As was spoken to earlier, our parents have a little different role now with our students working from home. And we want to make sure that they understand the curriculum as well as how to access different resources and what their students do to submit assignments. And the last thing at the bottom is that every day there will be daily exit tickets that students will complete and will be able to track and monitor things like student engagement as well as how they're doing and progressing through the content. Understanding by design is the key element of our spring ISD curriculum. It's, you may have heard of it before as backwards design, but it has a few other components as well. And so while we do want to look at backwards design, thinking with the end in mind, right? We know what the end goal is. These are the standards that Texas says that all of our students need to master. So we make sure that those elements are covered and that we spiral those back through. We also want to make sure that the transfer goals, those, those essence and big ideas are captured in the curriculum and that it is meaningful. It's not just something learned to complete a test, but it's something that students can apply outside of school. So how do teachers access the curriculum lab? Well, they access it through Schoology. So Schoology is a learning management tool, but it's also where we house our curriculum because teachers are able to pull from that and pull it directly into their courses. Teachers access it through their portal. They click on the link as you can see in this image. And, and actually for this, what you see here, we are transitioning to a new portal, but it'll look very similar. And this is the same access that students use to access the curriculum and their courses and what parents as well. So parents are able to see the scopes and sequence. They're able to see their, their children as they log in through their portal, and we'll show them specifically what, you know, the assignments for the course. They kind of impersonate each of their students as they log in through their portal. All of our teachers access it through a group called the Curriculum Innovation Lab. And while there's over 5,000 members to that group and we add staff as they come in, we also have the option for, for individuals who just come on board, we don't want to have any downtime. And so they are able to utilize codes as well to join different groups and courses. How it's structured is in the group is there's a resource folder, and then each level is broken down, and then each content area. And so teachers very easily can go directly to their level, their grade level, and the content to the, to what they teach. Once they get into their content level folders, they have those different documents we discussed, like the scope and sequence here at a glance and map, as well as the unit guides. I wanted to show you a couple high-level items from these documents. One of the items is our macro curriculum, and our macro curriculum really states our curriculum philosophy of what are those big ideas that students need to learn. We have it here as the goals, the transfer goals for the district as a whole, but they're also broken down within this document by content. And in the spring, many of these transferred goals were the focus of what we built around our empowered learning at-home PBLs. In this scope and sequence, you can see the unit, all of our curriculum units for each semester start with an SEL unit, a social-emotional learning, so that we can build those relationships and meet the students' needs first where they are emotionally. And also building that relationship is so essential with the teacher as well as with their peers. We also have SEL incorporated throughout the curriculum. It shows the number of days, the big ideas, important concepts, those TEACs. And really, it's like a roadmap. This is the curriculum map we discussed, and you can see here on the right, the rationale of why this item is taught during this period and why the length of time. And all of this is designed for each course area for the entire year. And I do want to kind of take a look at the unit guides as well. So unit guides are broken up into three pieces. They have the TEACs, the Elps, the transfer goals, essential understandings and questions that teachers can utilize directly in their instruction. And really, it's about what will students need to know after they complete this unit. And so here you can see an example of one of our units. Again, big ideas, TEACs, the standards, our Elps are integrated in as well as our social-emotional standards along our transfer goals. And you can see what are those key understandings, what are those essential questions? And a lot of times, teachers utilize these and use them in their lesson, directly in their lessons. The stage two of the document is about assessment. So now that we know what are those big ideas that students need to master, the next part is how are we going to check, right? How, what is the evidence to show that they've learned it? And so we have a number of items within those documents like performance tasks, products, exit tickets, unit assessments, and checkpoints. And here's an example of that, of what that section looks like. We have highlighted these new elements for this year. We do, we have built daily exit tickets as well as checkpoints for every three weeks. But there are a number of other assessments the teachers can pull from. The last stage is stage three. And stage three is where teachers can pull, what is that, how is that instruction going to roll out in my classroom? What activities can I use? And this is where it's so essential that we have a plethora of ideas for teachers because all of it is 100% designed by teachers who are the leaders of that curriculum. And what they do is they pull from those resources, they design lessons, often through their PLCs. And they, and daily in the classroom, they're collecting data to see where their students are, and so they're able to adjust based on the need. And they do that through utilizing our instructional models as well as vocabulary, textbook resources, and the ideas throughout the learning plans. One additional item that we've added this year are many lessons. So we have added exemplar videos that cover in each unit that cover the high level standards that we need to make sure that students master. And our curriculum team has developed these videos so that a teacher can watch for themselves and come up with ideas for instruction as well as even assign them to students. So they have students who may be struggling in certain areas, they can assign that video directly to the student to review. How this all works together is through this teaching and learning system model. We have district-level supports and resources to support our teachers. Our teachers are developing and implementing the curriculum in their classroom. And for our student, they're getting the supports they need. They're being tested and to make sure that they have mastered the content so that when they leave that any door is open to them. And so that we're excited to share those curriculum updates with you today. Are there any questions?
Not a question. I have to say, it is really gratifying to sort of sit in a room with my teammates and kind of come up with these abstract visions of what we want for kids and then see it made manifest in concrete by your team, Dr. Watson. And Dr. Paris, I don't remember you being in the room. So, I mean, you were speaking my language the entire time. So yeah, this looks outstanding. You know, now we have to execute. But, I mean, really, this is what I was thinking about when we were sitting in the room coming up with this stuff. So thank you for that. Outstanding.
Yes, this is Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Gonzalez has a question. Okay. Could you give me a little bit of information about the exit, exit tickets? How is that working?
Yeah, so what we, our team has done is they've, they've designed exit tickets based on the standards taught within that unit. And so there are multiple exit tickets by standard that are listed in a kind of pacing guide. And so teachers are able to select which exit ticket they'd like to use on any day and assign it to students. So in the curriculum, there's that pacing guide, and then inside Schoology, we've actually built exit tickets that are already done digitally, so teachers don't have to go back and recreate. And so they can then pull them into their course, they can assign them to students on whichever day based on the way that instruction rolled out. And so they have, they have that choice in, you know, which day the, the specific exit tickets are assigned. Because oftentimes from day to day in a classroom, it may vary. We have our scope and sequence, and teachers work within that, but they're adjusting based on student need.
Thank you very much.
Doctor, is it, could you help me with the pronunciation of your last name? Is it Parisso?
Yes, Parisso is correct. I say kind of like Boudreaux. I just don't have an X at the end.
It's like the French pronunciation very well. I did have a question. Part of your education process started with the engage part, which I think is so important. At least in high school, when I taught, I told people the hardest thing I did was try to get kids interested in my course. And could you give us an example from, maybe from the slides you've just been through, like the Algebra I? How would you engage students in Algebra I?
As far as the activities? So I can pull back through. Let me go to an earlier slide. So you can see here, like here's week one and week two. And so there are different learning plans, and each of these are clickable. So they take you to a whole nother document where you can go in and see specifics for the instruction. Like here, you can see targeted stations. So teachers are able to utilize stations in their instruction, and, and the resources are there as they're doing their lesson planning.
Well, then I guess my next question is, can the board have access to Schoology? And to click through some of these, just to enjoy what you have, all the work you've done?
Absolutely. We would love that. I know our team would be thrilled. And so I'll make sure that every single one of you have been added to the Curriculum Innovation Lab, and we'll also send out a how-to guide so that you can have the step-by-step of how to get into the documents.
Thank you. And then to wrap up our presentation, Matt, if you'll click to the next slide, our chief, our Executive Chief of Operations is going to give us a update on some additional supports available for our students.
Yeah, so you may ask yourself how this connects to curriculum, and the way it connects to curriculum is that we have to have students that are going to be able to have connectivity to, to be able to get all of these resources when the teachers are there. So Matt, if you could go to the next slide. So one of the things that we're looking at doing from a Wi-Fi standpoint to be able to make sure that we have connectivity for all of our students, which has been a priority through the summer to make sure we're getting, I'm getting reports even now as we speak on our Chromebook distributions that, that are going on today at our secondary campuses that are going quite well. We heard earlier about the lines out in front of one of our schools. So we're really excited about the Chromebook distributions today, but we also have a few hotspots that are available. Right now, we have about a Right now, we have about 1,000 hotspots available. And I'm going to show you in a minute how we're going to distribute those. But, but I'll come back to that in just a second, because I have a slide to show you how we're going to distribute those 1,000. We also have another 3,000 on order with TEA. We don't have the ETA on that a little bit quite yet, but those other 3,000 are expected to be in sometime later in the next couple of months. So some additional options for families when it comes to Wi-Fi service are the low-cost internet connections. T-Mobile, Comcast, and AT&amp;T all have low-cost connections. Just an example, some of those low-cost connections are tied to the free and reduced lunch status of those families. And we'll have online a link to their food service email that'll be able to provide them with their letter that indicates that they're free and reduced lunch, so they can get those really low-cost connection options. And then we have our campuses. You know, we have done a really good job through our bond program of getting Wi-Fi access in all of our campuses that actually point into the parking lots. And so our parking lots are going to be available. We have about 300 feet from our building where our parking lots will be available from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for those individuals that would like to, families that would like to drive up and do some drive-up Wi-Fi service. But back to those 1,000, if you can go to the next slide.
Hey Chief Miranda, before you do that, do you have any details on the bandwidth of these low-cost connections?
I can get some. No, I don't have them with me right now, but I can definitely do that.
So this is, this is a concern I have. So, so the low-cost connections, I have a concern that their bandwidth won't be sufficient for all of the things that our students and staff need to do. So it doesn't do you a lot of good to get a $10 connection, but then you can't do Schoology and watch the video at the same time. Or the teachers, the communication is bad because it's dropping in and out. I just would like some details on that. I'm hearing all the time that we have that, but I need to know that it's viable.
Absolutely, we can get that for you.
Mark, if you don't mind, I just pulled up InternetEssentials.com, one of those providers. The bandwidth is 25 megabits per second, which is not going to support eight streaming Netflix on two TVs and also Zoom and all of that. But they shouldn't be doing all that. It should support low-quality video for one or two users, similar to what you'd get through a webcam.
I have a similar, and some of us actually are using devices that are very similar. I have one from AT&amp;T that's about 25 MBS. And I am able to do my Zoom calls on it with very little interruption on that. So as Jeremy said, not huge Netflix, a couple Netflix. But for a lot of the things we'll be able to do, but we'll look into it. And we'll see if there are any other specs, and we'll be able to provide those specs to you. So this, I don't know, Matt, if you can zoom in or not on that. So when we look at who needs these devices, well, we just did a survey through Qualtrics that's given us some really great information. We actually got an update that said there's about 30,000 of our families that have already filled out the survey. And what they're doing on the survey, one of the things that they're doing is they're indicating whether they have reliable internet access or not. And from that, there was about 17, the last time we looked, and we're continuing to update this, there was about 1,700 unique IDs, so unique individual students who were listed as not having reliable internet access. We parsed that down to the number of households, because some of those are multiple student households. And we got a little over 1,000. We had 1,056 unique households that have responded to our survey that said we don't have reliable internet access. So as you recall from the previous slide, we have about 1,000 hotspots now. We have about 1,056 families that said they don't have reliable internet access. So you can't see this, but I'll give you kind of the way we're going to triage those here. And so the first step that we're going to look at is that 1,056 that have already responded and said, I don't have reliable internet access. But then we're going to go to another layer that says, are you economically disadvantaged or not? Because we want to make sure certainly that we're helping the families that are in the highest need categories. And so we're going to look through the economically disadvantaged, which is the same window that a lot of services look through when we're providing those for our families. And so we're going to do, there are two different things in economically disadvantaged. There's those that are qualified as free lunch, those that are qualified as reduced lunch. So our first triage for that would be the survey. The second triage would be the free-lunch families. And then the next one would be the reduced lunch families. We believe that when we get through that data analysis, that most of those 1,056 families are going to be able to be covered with 1,000 hotspots that we do have in-house. And again, we have another 3,000 on order that are coming. And so they'll be the next triage that will be going to the next level. And so that next level would then depend on where we are with the first group. If we have additional identified students that are in need, we're going to continue to be looking for students that maybe didn't respond, or maybe their parents thought they had a good access and didn't have a good access. We have a couple of different irons in the fire in terms of following up with students and families to make sure that we're meeting all of their needs, whether it's a Wi-Fi, or whether it's mental health, or whether it's food service that we'll show you in just a second. So we're trying to make sure that we're not leaving any of those families behind with layered services and layered options for them. Number one, here to get connectivity, and so this is a big piece of that. Any questions on this part before I show you the next one? Okay, Matt. So the next one is also related to food service, right? We are going to be doing meals at all of our elementary schools this fall. And we're going to have to do it not like we did in the springtime or the summertime. We are going to have to do it more like regular school is what we had before COVID, which is going to be those campuses that were all universally free will stay that way. And there are a few campuses that are going to have some paid at those campuses. We'll be delivering meals at the elementary schools. And so we think by doing it at the elementary school level, we'll be closer to the neighborhoods. And so there'll be many more distribution sites than there were in the spring and in the summer. And they'll be closer to the families, because they will be in the neighborhood locations from, at the elementary schools. But even with that, we know that there are families that aren't going to be able to come. They're not, they either don't have a vehicle, or they may be homeless, or there are some other options or some other obstacles that some of those families may have. And as I said, we don't want to leave any of those families behind. So we have an alternate meal service plan in place for those families who may literally even need a door-to-door service. Now, we're going to do this starting off with the help of our counseling department, because we have the community youth services workers in our counseling department that are very closely connected to those families that are highest need families in our school district. And by utilizing the KIAs workers who are already connected with a lot of those high-need families, we'll be able to triage out who those families are that are going to need that additional level of support and service from child nutrition. And so we're going to partner child nutrition in our transportation department to provide meal services to those families that aren't going to be able to travel to the elementary school to pick up their meals. And so in this way, we're trying to make sure that we're, again, as I said before, that we're not leaving families behind, that if they need a meal, we're going to figure out a way, Spring ISD, to take care of our families, to provide them a meal, to find a way to provide them connectivity when it comes to their internet. And all this is connected to curriculum, because in all of these different ways, we're going to be able to get them learning and kind of fulfill our purpose and our objective as a school district. Any questions for me on these?
Yes, Mark, this is Trustee Davis. The alternate meal service, I want to just commend the leadership team for doing this. I have expressed this, Dr. Watson, quite a few times. My concern is that the meals was not being reached out to the needed families with the locations that we located there, because most of our families cannot get to access those, facilitate those meals. Thank you for addressing this and attempting to fix that problem. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. I did want to follow up and say that we had 2,400, 2,400 teachers attend our fully virtual ed camp this summer. So I text and got that information. So that was a great turnout for a completely over the summer training. Thank you all.
So hopefully, you all saw those presentations. You saw the thread of equity that you asked us to look at, running through all of the presentations and the work that we're going to continue doing this fall. Just want to make sure that you all are seeing the expectations that you all have being implemented in the processes and procedures that we're working on.
I see it. I see it.
I see it, and I was very vocal, so I'm very appreciative. And seeing it come to fruition.
Again, to our outstanding curriculum, chief of curriculum and your department, you've done a wonderful, awesome job here. I appreciate this curriculum roadmap that you provided us with, and the teachers doing the virtual training camp. We're so delighted that everybody is jumping on board. And it's just like I say, this is going to be a new year for us. Even though it is virtual, it is going to be a new year. And Mr. Miranda, reaching out into the community, making sure that our kids are being fed, that you guys are not missing a beat. You're not missing a beat, and we are most appreciative. And thank you so very, very much. So, huh, that was so enlightening. Move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our general counsel, Jeremy Brinkley. You have some items to discuss with us.
I do. I have three items that shouldn't take very long. They're standard items that we generally discuss annually. Our first item tonight is going to be the order and notice of trustee election. This is, again, one of our annual items. Positions four and five are up for election this evening. This is also the standard order that we use. We've worked with Harris County. I will mention to the board, there was one update that you received earlier today on the election order. And that is to comply with Harris County's deadlines. We've had to move the ballot drawing to August 21st at 5:00 PM instead of August 24th at 5:00 PM. But that was, that shouldn't be too big of a change. Other than that, it's the standard order. Are there any questions, or can we put it on the consent agenda?
Hearing no questions, I think we can put it on a consent agenda.
Wonderful. So our second item tonight is one that I'm going to bring up, and then I'm actually going to turn it back over to this new house. It's the appointment of a delegate and alternate for the 2020 Tasby Delegate Assembly. This is something we do every year to identify who, which of our trustees are going to join the Tasby Delegate Assembly in October. I think, I think that's a virtual meeting this year is what was decided. But if we can, if we do our nominations tonight, then we can probably include that on the consent agenda as well for Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. And to our trustees, as you know, we do one delegate and one alternate for the 2020 Tasby Delegate Assembly. There are there any questions or any thoughts or any comments? I would make one, but I would wait to yielding the floor to hear from you, from our trustees.
Trustee Davis, I'm sorry, Trustee Davis, again. I know, I know it's on a tie, we're making, I guess we're just discussing right now. I know, once we have that discussion and just a recommendation, I'd like to recommend Dr. Jensen to be the primary for the assembly. And my reasons why, she worked very closely with me on the LAC committee this past year, the last three or four years she had. And especially this year, she had a chance to nominate me and support me to become part of the state LAC committee, which I'm representing the host, our district, our region, and also all the schools, all our children in the state of Texas. And Dr. Jensen is very instrumental on this last, this past year. We met in, we met in June by Zoom, and she was very instrumental, you know, make sure our priorities and part of all the children, all the states, all the policies that I submitted to you guys a couple of days ago to look at. She was a primary supporter, and she voiced her opinion very vocally during the LAC meeting. She especially said very well, and I actually shared with the point that we're realizing in our, in our particular state, we got to realize the makeup politically. And Dr. Jensen has the ability to cross party lines and to get things done. So that's where my support is at, you know, once we decide to make this election. Thank you very much for listening to me.
I have to say, I agree with Trustee Davis in selecting Dr. Jensen as a primary. But I'd also like to put out there for our secondary, I don't know if she's interested, but Trustee Hodges. And I say that in the interest of sort of developing our board. I think all of us have at some point, myself, I did it my first year. All of us have at some point attended those LAC meetings and seen what that's about. Actually, had Dr. Jensen chaperone me my first time. And so if Trustee Hodges is interested, I'd like to see her also in attendance, participating in that.
Is there any additional?
I don't have any additional comments. I'm just in full support of both recommendations.
Okay. And I just want to thank you, because I have enjoyed being your representative. And I can tell you that it's interesting in some of the discussions where spring adds substantially to the discussion, shall I say, that I think we add something to the state of Texas. A wonderful Leadership Academy graduates, Winford and Dawn.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen, for letting us know that you will agree to continue to do that. I know I'm delighted that you are saying that you will as well. And Trustee Hodges, I know you're our rookie, and we're trying to bring you in. We will give you some time to think about it. I won't ask you to give me an answer.
Sarah Hodges is, I mean, Trustee Hodges is overwhelmed right now. Yeah. Let's just say I have truly been baptized. I will definitely take it into consideration. I read the information that I received, but I need to take some baby steps. I'm really wanting to learn a little bit more. But yeah, let's talk about it offline.
Thank you, thank you. And I understand. Unfortunately, you were not able to attend our spring state conference meeting, nor our leader, summer Leadership Institute this summer too. And I hate that you had not had an opportunity to attend those conferences in person. You really learned a lot there. I know it's virtual now, but you really learned a lot on-site at the conferences.
And I think the hard part for me is that I really am a hands-on classroom learner. Like, I need to sit there. And so this has really been just a whole transition for me professionally and personally, just adapting to this, to this environment. So just be patient with me.
Will do, will do. So Jeremy, can we put this on for next week?
Yes, we'll, we'll go ahead and keep it off the consent agenda, so that Ms. Hodges has an opportunity to think about that. And then if we need to, then we could do an additional nomination.
Okay, thank you. Now, our endorsement for the Texas Association.
So this year, there are three positions in Region Four that are up for the Tasby Board. The board, our school board has the opportunity to endorse one candidate for each position within Region Four. You can find those on page 39.
Jeremy.
Yes.
Your mic is fuzzy. We can't hear you.
It's buzzing.
My AC got really loud when Mark had it turned back on.
It's, it's, it sounds like feedback from your mic.
Y'all hear me now?
Still getting it.
One moment. Oh, can y'all hear me better now?
Yes.
Yes.
Switched over to my webcam for some reason, so we're back on track. I switched over to my webcam for some reason, so we're we're back on track. So let me remember what I said.
The page number.
We're on page number thirty-nine, and I don't know if you caught the first part. Our board has the opportunity to endorse a candidate for each of the positions in Region Four for the Tasby Board of Directors. That is up this year. There are three positions. They're positions B, D, and H. And the board may, if they choose, endorse one candidate for each position.
Jeremy, can you can you highlight the candidates? Because I think one of the positions is that large position. And with that law, this is basically, you know, we don't do a nomination of that large position. That's what large districts, they have certain amount of students, right?
Okay, so you are correct, sir. I defer to you on that. It looks like there is a notation here that the large districts are treated as association regions and therefore do not participate in the endorsement process. So really, we're just looking at Region Four, Position B.
And for Position B, we have two candidates. I hope you have received the information. We have Darlene Bro from Aleaf ISD and Paige Rander from Clear Creek ISD. Presently, Paige Rander serves in that position. And she has indicated that she would like to continue in that position. And Darlene Bro, if you've had a chance to look at it again, is with Aleaf ISD. So is there any comments or suggestions or?
I would put a plug in for my HCDE colleague Darlene Bro. She is working on her doctoral dissertation right now. I've worked with her for the last three years or so, sat on interview panels with her. And so if if I have a, if I had a individual vote, it would be for a future Dr. Bro.
This is the first time, this is the first time we're indifferent. On my college, you will, well, I'm a part of that particular board as a legislative member now. And for the last two or three weeks, we've been meeting on different topics and stuff. I had an opportunity to observe Paige in a position and things she's doing. And I was just right now, there's a couple mandates and tasks, tasks and strategies she's already implementing that should be going to see pretty soon on the assembly this fall. And we have our bunch meeting in the fall. Of course, Paige was a person that also eliminated me on the position, but she's a great candidate, and she does some wonderful things. Darlene is Darlene is a very good individual. Also, she's part of this Black Caucus also. Paige is likewise. But Paige is in a position right now. She has a couple of strategies and a couple mandates she's working on right now. That's already at hand. So my position is that, you know, it is not broken. So why want to make a change? That's just my input.
Just wanted to comment, I've actually worked with both of them in in different arenas, and I actually think that they're both strong candidates. But I've known Darlene Bro personally for a number of years, and I I think she would be a viable candidate as well. I don't know, I probably didn't help, did I?
This is I would like to be in support and endorse Darlene from Aleaf as well.
Ms. Hodges, I'm with you. They both sound wonderful. I read their backgrounds and so on, and I I really think they sound both wonderful. So I'm no help here either.
Ms. Gonzalez.
I've I've met Darlene Bro on a number of occasions. I I feel like she would be a very strong candidate, so I would be in support of Darlene Bro.
Okay.
Do we vote tonight? President of New House?
Jeremy? For an end with you, we can't, we're voting tonight?
That that is completely up to the board. We do have time if we wish to wait and vote on Tuesday. But if the board's ready to make a motion and vote, they are welcome to do so.
Okay, I think we can go on and and vote tonight unless someone else has a reason not to. I'm hearing a majority, I was kind of writing down the comments and people. I was hearing a majority for Darlene Bro. So I guess we can make a motion and vote, or we can go with the motion to let's go with motion, the motion to vote.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
Madam President, I move that the Spring ISD Board of Trustees nominate Darlene Bro for Region Four, Position B, Representative to the Tasby Board.
Hey, do I have a second?
Trustee Durant.
Okay, it has been moved by Winford Adams and second by Justine Durant that we nominate Darlene Bro as our candidate for Region Four, Position B. All those in favor, since I can see everyone. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Only one out of five, okay. So we have five for Darlene Bro, for Paige Rander. We have one, and I abstain. So Darlene Bro is our candidate for, again, Region Four, Position B. Thank you, thank you. And now we have I think that's it, Jeremy.
From my items, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that that's it. Thank you. And thank you, trustees. Our next item on our agenda is to recognize our international auditor. And I'm sorry, our internal auditor, Patricia Rios.
Thank you. Evening, Madam President, board members, and Dr. Watson and cabinet members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present you our year-end progress report for the 2019 and 20 and our district risk analysis for the 2021, and also our internal audit plan for the new year 2021. As everybody has to adjust, obviously, we are moving and adapting to the new norms. And so at this time, we'll be continuing our team, but this time we'll be remotely. So remote audits will be conducted at the district level. We already have BP and access to the finance system and attendance system. So obviously, we have already participated in the bookkeeper's trainings and the department's training to to let them know the new norm and the new way how remote audits are conducted. Obviously, there sometimes there would be limitations, some of the audience, because we don't have digital documentation. And so those are the items that we're going to be learning, but it will be noted in the report. On August twenty-fifth, we will present to the parent organizations with Ms. Carol in order to present them the fraud awareness program that we still have a fraud hotline and are still monitoring and continuing with that the process. As you were aware, there's many new processes that we had to do at this time, including attendance. So those are the items that is so important to to review and to make sure that we in compliance, especially digital documentation. So those are the new, the new norms and the new way that we have to teach them. But most definitely, we'll be pressing, you know, obviously, virtually. So we'll conduct our meetings virtually. When it in page forty-five, I think in your package, you will have the year-end progress report. In the year-end progress report, it's actually gives you information of what we have done for the nineteen twenty until obviously COVID- nineteen. But, you know, it will give you assurance services, consulting services, the fraud hotline. And then I provided you the the risk analysis, our methodology, how we come up with the plan. And then lastly, I gave you the audit plan, and it's actually like the the calendar that you like to see. Where we have the timelines, where we start. But obviously, right now, safety is a priority. Like I told you, I wanted to retire from the district, but, you know, we wanted to be safe. So same with, you know, my staff in the school. So we'll now visit the schools, but we'll definitely do the remote audits. It'd be different because, you know, you will miss the face-to-face interviews, but we'll still have the virtual conferences, especially the bookkeepers that are not used to having Zoom meetings and, you know, seeing yourself. So we're trying to put them to to understand, it's okay, we we do understand, and there will be interruptions. So again, we're trying to accommodate the new way and the new norms for for this time. One of the things that I wanted to want you to to ask you if you if you can put this item in the consent agenda for the Tuesday board meeting. And obviously, I'm here to answer any questions that you have that I provided the packet. What I'd like to for you to do is you can put in the consent agenda, the the year-end progress report for the nineteen twenty and the internal audit plan for 2021. So we'll be auditing attendance for sure, transfers for sure. We're still doing the bomb program. The bomb is still, you know, up to date, so we'll we'll continue. But I will answer any questions that if you have any at this time. And I'm so glad that to see everybody do well in, you know, God bless you.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask you about how you do audits during a pandemic, but I, when I read your report, I was amazed at how many things you could do, continue to do. And also, I was interested in how active the fraud hotline has been and your, how many investigations you had to do there. So do you feel like you are still able to keep your finger on all the important parts, the high-risk areas in Spring ISD?
Yes, and that's what I'm also teaching my staff of how to conduct remote audits. It's different, and yes, we have some limitations, but we'll note it on the report. Only because unfortunately, we were not prepared for having digital documentation. So then it's hard to see. But what I tell them, I take anything, pictures, photos, you know, anything that they can show me. We'll take that as consideration. And remember, BP and access gives me the way how they take attendance. Have they taken attendance for the the students and also the in the financial areas? So yes, it's different, but we can do it. So there are limitations that I'm very confident that we will be able to be pressing for you.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Thank you for the report, and thank you for this really high-quality work. I'm looking at the the matrix that you have, trying to figure out what page, it's page sixty-four?
Yes.
And so you, it looks to me like these are scores. And so I want to know if I'm reading that right. And so does a five mean that we are doing well in terms of risk? And a one means we're doing poorly. I just want to
The numbers. Yes, Mr. Adams, the numbers will reflect if you go on the first of the page where it says last audit results, five percent. And that will be the rating. So on the first pages of the the risk and assessment methodology will give you the rating, and that is the number you will see. So for example, quality of the internal control systems, you will have the description and the rating, so five, three, one. And so that's what the number is putting into the table.
So one means that we do not have very good quality of internal control system. Is that correct?
The description will tell you what it means, and that's why I provide you those those pages so that you also can see what what that rating means for you. So the other area that I do with with the table is that I divided by departments and areas and functions like the principals, the school operations, so that way you can see what areas are we interested in. And then at the end, you will see the audit plan, and those are the the major risk areas that we're looking at.
Okay, and so the audit plan does not include our action plan for improving those high-risk areas, right?
Yes, our audit plan, and remember, we're two personnel, so our audit will reflect what is the the most risk. But then the tell you, the table will actually let you know what areas are not able to conduct as of today. And so if those areas move into the high risk, then we'll move it to the next plan.
So this is a sort of, for me, when I'm looking at data, like what would be helpful for me again is to see whether these ratings are an improvement or a decrease in in terms of our efficacy, right? So if I had the report from last year, I'd be able to sort of look at, you know, something that we got a zero or a one on, how was that going last year? Where are areas of improvement? So that's the only, like, sort of feedback in terms of what I'd like to see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Rios, you've been very thorough with us.
Can we get that year-over-year comparison?
I'm sorry?
Can we see a year-over-year comparison?
To you, last year's and this year's, and I use the same table so that way you can see the the new numbers.
And Ms. Rios, on, just to Mr. Adams' point, on that table on page sixty-four, that's not necessarily performance so much as it is the risk. And so some areas are just inherently a higher risk because of the number of transactions. So I believe the only one that really speaks to the actual score from the year before is the last two columns. And that's the, you know, the the last audit results. And so if the last audit results were favorable, then that's a lower risk category. If the last audit results were unfavorable, then that's a higher risk area. So this table doesn't necessarily speak to performance so much as it speaks to risk based on that criteria.
That is correct. So the last, the last numbers, and you're correct. And obviously, Ms. Finance is, you know, a high area of risk, and she knows that for for fact. So that's why she she will have a financial impact, a number very high, because she is in the higher risk. But she is correct, that the time since last audit and the last audit result will give you a little details of where we are right now into those areas.
Right, so so Ms. Westbrook, what I'm looking at, though, and so if you correct me if I have this wrong, but for a category like quality of internal control systems, right, that would seem to me to be something that, that'd be a lever that we could pull in terms of the quality of our internal, like if we're, if so we, I've run into this in in previous areas where there was, you know, like whether we have locks on file cabinets and things of that nature to reduce risk. So that seems to me like that is something that we could improve or through negligence or recklessness do more poorly at from the perspective of an auditor like Ms. Rios.
And that is correct. So the quality of And that is correct. So the quality of the control system, the rating is obviously five, that there is little or no formal controls. And so, and also you have to consider when there, whenever you have changes, then your controls will change too. And so those are the, um, you know, probably you have controls in place, but not, they're not formally documented. So those are the areas we look. But one of the things that you also have to remember, I'm not able to look at all the areas, but I look at the higher-risk areas that we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But, uh, Mr. Durant, I will provide you, you know, a little comparison so that you will see where we are right now. That would be more.
So, Westford, let me ask you, would you like to receive that comparison before we put this on the consent agenda? Or can we go on and put the, uh, internal audit?
I'm okay with it being on the consent agenda. Um, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Then is anyone else, uh, with an objection? Hearing none, then I will say, Ms. Rios, we will put the year-end progress report for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and the district risk analysis, uh, report for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and the internal audited plan for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one on the consent agenda for next week, for next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we continue on our agenda, that I just lost, our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resources and Human Capital Accountability, Julie Hill.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Watson and cabinet members. I am not going to be very long either this evening because my items are really just, uh, bringing them back to just, um, add some pieces into one and then summarize in the other. So if we can start on page sixty-nine, looking at the staffing guidelines, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one got staffing guidelines, there's really, I'm, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay. Um, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So, uh, really from the staffing guidelines, everything is basically the same. I wanted to share, though, what was added. And it's our ninth-grade center staffing guidelines, and that's the sheet that I'm showing you now. And I wanted to call attention to it, uh, just so that there was some understanding of, um, how we've staffed the, the ninth-grade centers. And basically, we've had some people walk across the courtyard or across the, the, um, the parking lots into the next building. And so not all of the positions are new. Um, you'll see a notation of transfer. That's where there's someone that was in the main, on the main campus building, and they are now going into the ninth-grade center building. But there are a couple of, um, positions that were unique, that really was not possible to share. And so those are positions that, in fact, we've added. So the associate principal that's leading the buildings was really, one of the associate principals from the main building has transferred over. Um, we have two assistant principals in each of the ninth-grade center buildings. One is actually a new position, the other is a transfer from the main campus. It was, um, necessary for us to have a counselor at the ninth-grade center to service the needs of those particular students. We also added, um, an LVN, a licensed vocational nurse. The teachers are basically transferring from one building to the other. So we didn't have to add additional teachers. We just split the ones that we had in order to staff, um, into the, the ninth-grade center building. Was challenging and difficult to share the testing coordinator. So of course, we added a testing coordinator, especially since at the ninth-grade center, we have, um, three end-of-course exams. They really needed someone dedicated to take care of the testing needs there. The clerical staff have all, also are additions, so that there's a secretary there for the associate principal, the two assistant principals, the secretary actually transferred over, but we've got a registration clerk, an attendance clerk, receptionist that will be manning the front desk there. We've also added someone to man their library, a library media specialist aide, though, I'm not a full specialist. We also have a positive behavior intervention aide that was added, and a hall monitor for that building as well. So those are positions that we've added that are new to the building. And like I said, the others are being shared. Other than that, what you saw in June and what you approved is, is still intact. This is the addition to the staffing guidelines. Are there any questions?
So, um, Dr. Hill, how many extra FTEs are there per ninth-grade campus?
Um, there are actually technically thirteen. There are eleven that are actually the academic pieces, and then we do have a, a police officer and, um, a, a building operator, plant operator, custodian.
Ms. Hill, um, is this for Spring High School in Decane? I, I understood that Westfield's ninth-grade center was not going to be ready at the beginning of the year, or am I, uh, did I misunderstand?
Um, you are correct. They're not going to be ready at the beginning of the year. However, we are anticipating that they will be ready before the year's end. And so, um, over at Westfield, Mr. Mason and his team have already actually, um, cordoned off the ability to have that group of, um, staff members start to work together and start to learn their kids. And so they'll, they'll sort of be operating within the school, the school within the school, working specifically with their population. So that when we're ready, um, which we anticipate to, to happen, um, at the end, or, or either at the very beginning of the second semester, they'll be able to walk across the courtyard already intact as a unit that's had an opportunity to bond the first semester, and they'll go into their new building.
So, um, Ms. Hill, they, they won't, so all of the staff for Westfield for clarification, they have, will be hired at the beginning of the year? And so you're saying they'll be working together, and when it's time for their transition, when the building opens, they'll already be in play?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
I have a question with the, um, transfers over from the high schools to the ninth-grade centers. That leaves our principals short-staffed and also losing critical seasoned APs. So how are we addressing that to make sure, um, the transition of the staff to the ninth-grade centers doesn't impact the stability of the high school campuses, though?
Chief Miranda, did you want to jump in, or you want me to go ahead?
Yeah. So, um, that, that's a great question, because some of, some of the better leaders are, are moving over to the ninth-grade center, but we are, uh, backfilling. We did add an assistant principal over at the ninth-grade center to be able to prevent us from having to move additional people over to that. Um, and because the campus i- is really one campus, um, and so it's, it's one campus, multiple buildings, right? And so, uh, same number of students overall, two, two thousand, you know, five hundred, uh, at some of the campuses. And, and so because that staff is moving over, um, to support those students, we think that, that we're going to be okay there. We've had a lot of conversations with the principals a- about that, and we are filling positions, um, you know, as we shuffle the deck a little bit for that. But, um, that is definitely something to continue to keep an eye on, and, and we do appreciate, um, the point on that.
I think the biggest, I think the biggest takeaway with that is that, um, it's not anything necessarily that the district is doing. The principal of each of the high schools is the principal of the middle school. And so all of them are their staff, and so they're the ones that hired their associate principal for the schools. They've hired the teachers for both campuses, um, and the assistant principals. And so it's their campus, they're running both of the campuses and placing the individuals in those positions. And then when there's a need to have stronger staff in different areas, they have the authority, even when school starts to move someone from the main campus to the ninth-grade center and back and forth as the principal of the school, based upon their needs for their campus.
So they have autonomy to make those decisions themselves?
Yeah, they're making all of those decisions.
And in fact, they have done that already. The, the principals, um, have been working for months, and they've looked at the staff that they have and across the board, and have made strategic decisions, working alongside of them, all of their leadership team, as to which teachers that would be in which building, and even which administrators. Um, because we funded an additional assistant principal position, but by design, they intended that there would be two, and they would take one over. And so they made decisions among themselves, once they did their hiring, and made sure that their, their staff was intact, who was going to go over to each of the different positions. Um, so they're, they're very comfortable that, that they have, um, to quote one of them, um, he believes that he has a powerhouse team, um, at the ninth-grade center, but also believes that he has the strength left to make sure that his main campus is handled as well. And, and he's informed us that he's not going to skip a beat. So they all pretty much share the same sentiment, and they've been really excited about getting the opportunity to be one campus at two locations, and to make sure that they provide quality service to the students at both of the different locations.
With the addition of the, uh, extra AP at ninth grade, they actually have a net gain in their high-level administrators. And so as one team, they'll be able to work together, even though they'll be in two different buildings, but.
And I think that's the main thing, that, the main point to get across. I know when, uh, Dr. Hinahosa set up those visits, and I think some of you might have gone to a couple districts with us to visit, um, the feedback that we got was, don't separate them like two separate campuses, um, because that's what creates kind of what you were mentioning, uh, uh, Ms. Durant. Um, they, the recommendation that we got was keep them one campus, have with one principal, and then you have the ninth-grade center, um, associate principal that's there to really make sure that they stay connected.
And also, I guess the power of the additional positions that were added was, um, that Chief Westbrook's, Chief Hinahosa at the time, had an opportunity, um, to sit together with all the principals and to design what were the additional positions they believed that they needed, that really couldn't be someone walking back and forth, but that needed to be duplicated to make sure that there was no gap in services at all. So that's why there's the addition of another counselor. That's why there's the LVN that's dedicated to that building. That's why there's a hall monitor dedicated to that. So they try to make sure, what are those things that we really want to make, make certain that there can be no gap in services, that there's a smooth continuity, and those are the additional FTEs that we put in each building.
Well, that's good. And I know a couple of years ago, we embarked on growing our own. And so I think it's really, um, positive. I'm excited that we have the ability to give them that opportunity, and we've seen the growth that we need to be successful in moving our leadership, uh, capabilities so that they could take on the, uh, the new task and responsibility. So that's a good thing. I just want to make sure that we're continuing to grow within and leave our campuses very strong. Um, we have challenging high schools, and I think we need, um, experience and strength in our, our leadership there. So thank you for sharing that feedback with me. I feel more comfortable.
And we're also, um, just a preview of what's coming Tuesday night. So Tuesday night, you're going to get an opportunity to not only meet our new principals, but you'll be formally introduced to the associate principals that will have the day-to-day stewardship of our ninth-grade centers. And, um, as Ms. Miranda said, as we grew our own and as we promoted from within, we have additional administrators for you to meet that have, um, taken those new positions as everybody moved up. So we're really excited for you to have a chance to meet, um, the, the grow our own. We, we grew quite a few people, um, this hiring season, and, and you'll have a chance to formally meet them on Tuesday.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add the comment that, uh, it's my impression, and I've heard this from both students in the school and, um, personnel, that the most challenging class is the freshman class. So I'm glad to see these extra people go over there. Uh, I see you nodding, President Newhouse, you may have something else to say.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, um, we have. We did our best at that ninth-grade center.
Yes, ma'am. And, um, the principals have, have really been very strategic and deliberate to be certain that they are, are putting powerhouse personnel over in the ninth-grade center to, to take care of those transitioning, still baby ninth graders as they, they start high school. So, um, we, we think we have a really good plan, and, and I'm excited to be a part of it. Any other questions on the staffing guidelines? All right. Well, let's take the opportunity to take a look at the comp plan. As you know, we also, um, have done bits and pieces of the comp plan as well. And so this really is just going to give you a look at the, what the final document is. I believe you have it in front of you. It's probably, um, it's pretty lengthy, um, so I won't flip through all of it. But let me at least put it up on the screen so that we can all see the document that we're working from. It's, uh, page seventy-one in your agenda packet, but you had a handout on the comp plan. Let me share my screen again. I think you can see me? So the compensation plan, I think I want, what I want to point out most of all to you is, um, this is our, our new, our teacher scale, um, that you approved for us back in June. So, um, it's here for, for all, for publication, for them to be able to see. I think the other piece I wanted to, uh, point out to you is, um, the stipends that we discussed that you also, um, took care of us for, for us early in the year are also in place. And all of our new pay scales, all of our new pay plans that are part of the work that we did with Tasby, um, that you adopted for us, uh, formally, they're all now in the document. And this is the document that includes everything that you approved for us with the, with the equity adjustments, with the new pay scales, with the new rates, um, for all of our employees. And so, um, it's now here for everyone to be able to see and check out. And I, I believe in anticipation of, um, one of their first paychecks, everybody's going to be excited to see, um, how they landed and, um, what their new rates are. Are there any questions? Well, if not, Madam President, I would ask that both of these items, the staffing guideline and the compensation plan for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one be placed on the consent agenda on Tuesday.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. And again, uh, Jeremy, we'll make sure that the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Spring ISD staffing guidelines and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Spring ISD compensation, composition, compensation manual are both placed on the agenda for next week. Thank you. So we will continue to and recognize our next Chief Academic Officer, Kentara Bradford.
Yes. Good evening again, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board. Um, tonight we have our annual update and review of the student code of conduct, which is found on page seventy-three of your board packet. Also note that you have additional supplemental materials, um, handouts, which are the draft of the twenty twenty-one, uh, student handbook revisions, as well as a, the revisions document, which we're going to go over with you tonight, this, uh, evening. And to brief you this with you, um, who's going to walk you through it, is our Director of Student Affairs, uh, Mr. Thomas Graham. I'm going to hand it over to him.
Good evening, Mrs. Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. Uh, today I'll be going over the revisions of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one students' code, students' code of conduct. Can, uh, everyone see me?
Not yet.
There we go. Please forgive me for that. Okay. So good evening again, Mrs. Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. I'll be going over the two thousand twenty, twenty-one student code of conduct. If you can see that, uh, my projection in front, I'll go ahead and begin. The items that you see on the left in black are from the two thousand nineteen, twenty student code of conduct. The items on the right in blue are the revisions to the two thousand twenty, twenty-one student code of conduct. The term epidemic will be changed on the final version to reflect pandemic. Again, I'll go through all of the, uh, particular changes and revisions that we have. The first major change that we have, and all the revisions that we have right now have been approved and have received from the governance, the, excuse me, the, the Board Governance Committee. The first revision that we'll discuss will be the electronic distribution of the student code of conduct to meet with pro COVID-19 procedures and protocols for this year. Typically, we will have mass hard copy distribution of this, but in keeping with protocols and procedures for COVID-19 this year, it will be distributed, it will be able to be downloaded from our website, uh, with, uh, With uh, this particular item, parents and students could go to the website to get this particular item. In the case that we have individuals who would like to receive a hard copy, they can reach out to my office directly and we'll make sure that we'll have a hard copy for them. The next portion that you'll see is the actual removal of the hard copy mass distribution of the student code of conduct. Moving on. The next area that we're looking at is the transmissible pathogen spread. This area has been included in the student code of conduct to directly address COVID nineteen procedures. It's been outlined so that it follows the same format as our student code of conduct in the past. Whereas the beginning portion outlines the expectations for students. And the second portion outlines the the items that students will not be permitted to do. To begin. Each student. If we're looking at the expectations, students are going will be expected to adhere to social distancing procedures. When applicable, to maintain their P P E, that's their personal protective equipment, including masks, face shields, or utilize six feet distancing. Wash their hands with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. When applicable also. We also want to make sure that they cover their mouths or use their uh, use their elbows if needed. Uh, when if they have to sneeze or cough or things of that nature. And also throw tissues or trash cans in appropriate designated areas to cut down on contamination in the buildings. The next area we'll look at is the intentional infection area. The intentional infection area addresses the items that students shall not be permitted to do. The first thing is cough, sneeze, spit, or expel otherwise contact any type of bodily fluids or secretions purposely onto another person. Purposefully interfere with the usage of another person's personal P P E equipment. Removal of their P P E equipment with the intention of injecting fluids on another person. Intentionally encroaching on another student's social distance perimeter. Now, we understand that during the year when we get back to school, there might be instances where students have to do this, but when there is available where students will not have to do this. We want to make sure that they still adhere to this particular guideline. Next, we want to ensure that students students will not be permitted to display any type of profane, abusive, or disruptive materials. On their P P E equipment. Moving on. Failure to wear appropriate P P E equipment will be considered a dress code violation and will be addressed in the manners outlined within this document. The next portion that I'll address are situations if we rarely do rarely, and this is a rare occasion that we expect. But in the occasion that we have a student that intentionally knowingly or recklessly coughs, sneezes, or expels bodily fluids onto another person. That student may be subject to assault charges as outlined in the Texas Penal Code twenty two point oh one. In the case that this rare occasion may happen, the following steps will be taken to address this matter. First. That student will will notify campus administrator, whomever will notify campus administrator. The administrator should remove the student and do an thorough investigation. The student will be taken to the nurse's office to have a full review to see if that student is showing any symptoms of COVID nineteen. In the case that this student is showing any type of symptoms related to COVID nineteen or any other pathogen. That particular student will be sequestered during the amount of the investigation. The school nurse will notify the administrator with the findings that he has, he or she has has found out. And then that administrator will contact the parents of the students involved in that particular situation. The main item that the campus administrator would do was to check to make sure that this was not done intentionally knowingly or recklessly. This is we're not considering accidents. We're talking students who are doing intentional items. If the investigation determines that this was performed intentionally recklessly and this person was doing this with a malice type basis. That student would be subject to appropriate levels as outlined within this particular document. It's also important to note that a student who removes his or her mask in. Violation of P P E prior to or immediately prior to engaging in any of the aforementioned items. Will be subject to disciplinary items because it will be viewed as that that person intentionally participated in those items. Moving on, changing direction. The next item that we'll discuss is vaping. As you know, we've had an increase of vaping and drug related incidents within our district. One of the major issues that we've had to address is when we have vaping devices on campus. Administrators and staff members can't determine if that information, if the substance within that vaping device. Is an illegal substance or tobacco substance or C B D substance. So this particular item added to the student code of conduct addresses all of those matters. Uh, in case those items are brought onto the campus. Next. The notification aspect. This notification is a notification that we typically have and typically continue to to use whenever we have to inform an individual. Uh, about any type of disciplinary consequence on a campus. We've added a small provision in the bottom to allow parents and students to know that in the case of remote learning. A student will also be notified by a campus administrator regarding disciplinary issues. The next item. That we'll look at is the D A P elementary classification for uh, kindergarten. We only added a small portion in here for clear clarification for those students who are in the sixth grade or higher. Students, and this was only to ensure that individuals understand that. The only students that will be eligible for D A P are ages six and higher. And this was just added clarification. To continue. The next portion that we'll look at is a vaping device that has been added to the glossary and the definition of an E cigarette. And I've already covered the items outlined for vaping device. The next glossary addition will be the personal protective equipment and a definition outlining that information. The failure to follow social distancing procedures or properly utilized P P equipment has been added as a level one violation in the student code of conduct. The intentional infection of a person or spread of pathogens have been added to a level three. Violation in the student code of conduct that may warrant a D A P placement after a thorough investigation. That concludes the revisions, outlines. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have one. This is Trustee Davis. Thank you, Mr. Graham, for a good report. Uh, since we are doing everything electronically online. Uh, usually we have students and parents to acknowledge a receipt of this document. Uh, are we doing electronics electronic signing or how are we handling that particular portion to make sure to ensure all those changes you just mentioned? To ensure that our students and our parents are receiving information and knowledge and information has been received and reviewed.
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis, that information, we also have a portion outlined in the student code of conduct. Where the parents actually have to sign that and return it back in. That they've actually downloaded and acknowledge that they've downloaded that information.
So we're still doing the paper drill basically, right? That we always do on that portion, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
I just want to be clear. So. I think when when uh, Trustee Davis said paper trail, well, it's a digital paper trail. We're not producing hard copies of these.
So as part of the registration process, the parents acknowledge that. And so parents have gone through and began to acknowledge that and they know now that it's pending board approval. So all the parents, the the three thousand and some parents that have already started the registration processes, it is part of that registration process.
So I'll I'll tell you a concern I have, and maybe this is flighty of me, but um. People in our society sign all sorts of digital user agreements. For all sorts of things. Um, every time you download an app. You're signing some agreement that's six thousand pages long that you're not reading. And so I'm wondering. Um, and I'm sure we're doing this, but I just want to put it out there. Additional things we are doing in terms of educating students and parents about changes to the code of conduct.
We started, oh, go ahead, Dr. Watson.
You're good. Go ahead.
I was, we're, we've started just talking through a lot of these as part of our introductory lessons at the start of the school year, especially around um, activities like open house or parent meetings. As well as just introducing these concepts um, to students. So personal protective equipment, you know, all of that. So we really are doing more to just integrate it into our ongoing conversations with families. Um, several schools are even, you know, having the uh, drive through parent meetings. So parents can come and get, you know, resources, hand them documents. Um, so it's going to be part of all of our opening, beginning of the school year conversations as well as ongoing as we meet with students and families. We're actually. Embedding some of that into the first few weeks because we know it's going to be a a new adjustment for all of our students. Especially as we are more just digital, like becoming digital citizens. And so lessons around digital citizenship. And transferring some of those beginning of the school year rules to now that virtual environment.
But one of the other things that we can do, I know um, our communications team does a great job of uh, sending important updates. Uh, for events and different notices to principals to add in their smores newsletters. And so we can take the this this one or two pager of all of the updates. And to make sure that those are pulled out and given to the principals, they can add them in their smores newsletters to go out to their parents the next week.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, now that the the code of conduct with the updates too, I'd like to look at too, as we look. We get closer to in person too. So doing something to alert our families to the code of conduct and the updates and its availability on our website. But as we get closer to in person too, we can do stuff to then again, because a lot of these apply to the in person. Um, when the students are coming back to campus and some of these new um, um, items as it relates to COVID nineteen. It'd be great and we'll we'll plan for that to also be updating our families as we start to transition them back to campus. That they're well aware of all of these items um, and that um, that the code of conduct applies to their students.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all. This concludes our presentation and we ask that this be submitted on Tuesday to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. And yes, we will add this to the consent agenda, the spring independent. School district student code of conduct will be added. Thank you.
For awareness purposes, we don't want to add the um, maybe the changes to open session.
Sorry, could you repeat that question now?
You say changes to open session?
I'm 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 recommending that we not put it all on this consent agenda with the changes that are coming about with the the need to communicate and make sure parents are aware. I would recommend or ask that we do not put it on the consent agenda. I don't know if we need to review the entire thing, but at a minimum, the two pages that we're recommending go in the newsletters, we should also. Review during our open session.
It it does provide another opportunity to get the information out there. So I would agree.
We are changing one word from this version as well from uh, epidemic to pandemic. So that would be another reason to do that.
Okay, we'll be prepared.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will pull that part out, Ms. Bradford, and have a special uh, presentation on that.
Okay.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief communications officer, Tiffany Dunne O'Neal.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. This should be a fairly straightforward item. I am bringing forward. The um, contract with the college board for our universal um, um, S A T and P S A T tests for our students. Just as a little background, I know you guys know this, but this is actually our seventh year of the universal um, P S A T and S A T testing. As you know, there was a strong commitment from the district to offer offer this universal testing as a way of removing barriers to our students. Um, as they look at higher ed. And so with that, just a couple of little updates as you look at this contract, this is a contract that you see every year. We do have the dates that are planned. The P S A Ts are planned in October for October's um, fourteenth, seventeenth, and twenty ninth. The college board is working with school districts um, in the application of these tests, giving flexibilities on those days. So that we are going to be able to um, adhere to the social distancing. We are going to continue to monitor the situation, um, look at our application um, of these tests. Um, Dr. Jennifer Cobb will be working very closely with curriculum and instruction and our school leadership team as we approach the dates. The S A Ts are planned for March third with a makeup date of March twenty fourth. Again, we'll be looking at these very closely as the dates come. But the college board is working with schools on flexibility of sites and flexibility of dates. So that we can apply all the social distancing measuring measures that we need to in the application of these tests. And on the last note, as you look at this contract, we will not be charged for unused tests. So as we approach these dates, if the participation um, is lower than in in and previous years due to COVID nineteen, we will not be charged for unused tests. So um, I don't know if there's any questions on the contract. I know you guys are familiar with this contract. If there's no questions, I would like to ask that it's added to the consent agenda for Tuesday night's board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do that. For our next, for next item, I'd like to recognize our chief innovation and equity officer, Dr. Lupita Hina Hosa. Dr. Hina Hosa. We have you next. Thank you. I think my internet's going in and out, but thank you so much.
So members of the board, Dr. Watson, um, our goal, this next item, and I'm going to be on page ninety seven. So as you know, our goal is to ensure excellent and equitable outcomes for all of our students. So the one way that we are addressing this is to continue to expand. And enhance our partnerships with our community and business partners as well as the institutions of higher ed. So tonight, the administration brings to you for approval an M O U. That will enhance our partnership with Texas A and M. I said on page ninety seven, the purpose of this M O U between spring I S D and Texas A and M is to provide. Experience for the Texas A and M students in spring I S D. This practicum placement will provide learning opportunities for the students in um, in their course of.
So I think Lupita froze a little bit. I'm going to keep going. So it is a partnership with Texas A and M. Um, for us to really be able to continue our partnership to provide services uh, for the experiences for the individuals that are. Uh, providing services for our students. So specifically, it will be the Texas A and M students in meeting the objectives and coursework established by them. They'll be working to establish practicum hours for students in spring I S D. Um, as well as they'll be following all the spring I S D policies. We believe that these types of services are really help us, especially with the demand. Um, that we see across the state with L L S Ps. And I see Lupita back and I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes. No, thank you, Dr. Watson. I don't know what's happening. I guess it's getting tired for the end of the day here, but as you say. Um, you know, I think one of the most important pieces is, yes, providing the services for the students. Um, the Texas A and M students, but most importantly, this is going to be bringing additional support to our spring I S D students. Because um, these students, Texas A and M students, will be able to provide counseling services in the fall. Um, and then in the springtime, they're going to be able to not only do counseling sessions, but also consultations and also assessments. So there's a great benefit to um, the district. And at the end of the day, we will have the opportunity to recruit. And at the end of the day, we will have the opportunity to recruit some excellent students that we ourselves have trained in our springway. And in just speaking to the professors already of the eight candidates that are in the program at Texas A&amp;M, we already have two that are extremely interested and have committed to coming to Spring ISD to complete their practicum. So just very excited to enhance this partnership and ultimately, you know, be able to provide more services to our students and gain some great applicants for our, our coming school year. And so I'd like to be able to have your approval on this item and place it on the consent agenda for Tuesday. Are there any questions?
I think Ms. Newhouse is trying to talk. She's muted.
Thank you. Dr. Hannah-Hosse, hearing that we have no questions, we will put this on the consent agenda and look forward to working with the students at Texas A&amp;M throughout the year. Thank you. Next, I'd like to give our chief financial officer, Ann Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Newhouse. Good evening, Dr. Watson, members of the board. We'll begin on page 103 with our first item. And with this item, it's in regards to Operation Connectivity. That's a new program through the Texas Education Agency. And so I'm going to share my screen really quickly with you all. Okay. So you, our Board of Trustees, were committed to ensuring that our students had the adequate amount of devices that were necessary in order to transition over into remote learning at the beginning of the pandemic. When, back in March, we came to you all and said we needed some additional devices, and you quickly gave us the authority to spend up to $5 million on additional devices. And we placed those orders pretty quickly and got some devices in place and started distributing devices to our students. And we also had authority from you all over the last few years to transfer surplus funds from our successful years with general fund over into a non-bond capital projects fund that had funds earmarked for technology refresh. And so that gave us the opportunity to buy even more devices for our students. Well, on July 17th this year, Governor Abbott announced a new program called e-learning, or some new funding for e-learning, and the program was called Operation Connectivity. And so those funds set aside $200 million of the CARES Act funding that the state of Texas earmarked for the Texas Education Agency to use to purchase some e-learning devices as well as home internet solutions for students across the state. Those funds are being allocated based upon the number of economically disadvantaged students that are enrolled in the district. So for Spring ISD, we have over 29,000 students that are, that are coded as economically disadvantaged. So that means that we could have purchased devices up to that number of students and still been eligible for the matching of up to 50% of the district's cost. So the Texas Education Agency has worked with Region Four and has given Region Four the authority to act on behalf of TEA, and they're overseeing this bulk order that's happening at the state level. So this information came out on July 17th, and we had to fill out a survey extremely quickly, had a very fast turnaround in order to take advantage of this program that's being overseen by Region Four. So Region Four is the one that's executing all of the day-to-day logistics of getting the devices to districts. And we've, we have created or already signed, Dr. Watson signed this week for us, the inter-local acquisition agreement that's required between Spring ISD and Region Four so that we can order our devices through this program, Operation Connectivity. And so that's what we'll actually be seeking the board's approval on, on Tuesday, is the ratification of that interlocal agreement between Spring ISD and Region Four that allows us to take full advantage of this program and receive that up to 50% matching funds for additional devices. And so as part of the program, Spring has committed to purchasing 9,700 Hewlett Packard Chromebooks, as well as 3,000 hotspots, which you heard Mr. Miranda mention earlier today about those 3,000 hotspots. The total cost for those devices, the hotspots and the Chromebooks, is that $2.8 million. But through the matching funds that comes along with this program, the district's cost would be $1.4 million. And so that's the amount that we've committed to. What we do know at this point is that the Chromebooks have a lead time of about 10 to 16 weeks for TEA to get them, for, for Region Four to get them in place, and then they'll ship to the district once they've been received. So we're having the benefit of not only the negotiated pricing, which helps get the devices at a lower price, but also the greater benefit of having that 50% off of the total cost that the district is able to use. And so we're looking at using our bond fund interest revenue to pay that $1.4 million because, as you know, a portion of our bond, the 2016 bond program was for technology. And so we're well within the allowability of our bond program to utilize those funds to purchase the additional devices for our students. And once we, we do receive that last order of 9,700 Chromebooks, we will be officially at a one-to-one for our students, which means that we would have one device for each and every student in Spring ISD, as well as have a sufficient amount of reserved devices that would be available if we have devices that are broken or misplaced or whatnot. So, and that's something we've been concerned about is we issue the devices out, but if something happened to the device, we wouldn't necessarily right now have a device to replace while we're attempting to troubleshoot or get the device back up and running. So this would have the district in a, in a very good place. And as I mentioned, it would put us at a one-to-one, which has been a goal for the district as soon as we started out with this process. So for Tuesday, you think what we're asking is to have the ratification of the interlocal agreement on the consent agenda?
So this is very good news. I texted Rodney about this earlier in the week or last week. And the reason I was texting is because this came up during public comment during Commissioner's Court in Harris County. And so I'm wondering if there might even be more funding available that we can give, get a haircut on the $1.4 million through resources from the, from Harris County, from Judge Doggo. So thank you for your work on this, Ms. Westbrook.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Adams, for mentioning that because there is a flyer that TEA has put out to the cities and the counties that are asking them to earmark some additional funds that would, as you mentioned, bring the total cost for the district down even lower. And so they would earmark a portion of their coronavirus relief funds for this purpose. So we're, we're waiting to get some news about that, and hopefully our city and our county will take advantage of providing that opportunity for us.
Thank you, Winford. Ms. Westbrooks, we will keep our fingers crossed on that.
Yes, ma'am.
That one million a little more.
That would be awesome. Yes, ma'am. If there are no additional questions on that item, then I'll move to our second item, which is our monthly list of taxpayer refunds, which can be found on page 105 of your packet. And so as you can see, we've got over $400,000 in taxpayer refunds, and we're just continuing to issue refunds and gearing up right now for the latest version of our property tax values to come out. We received an updated estimate July 24th. And so the estimate of our values for July compared to April, we're still very comfortable, not, not much change between April and July. So that's good news, but we're waiting for our final certified values to come in at the end of this month, and then that's what we'll bring back to the board to set the district's tax rate for the 2020 tax year. Okay, if there are no questions on the taxpayer refunds, then the last item that I have for you this evening begins on page 108. And Ms. President Newhouse started us off talking about how busy everyone has been in the district and all the work that's been taking place over the last several months as we adjusted to the new normal and prepared for the new school year. Well, this seven-page list of purchases should certainly speak to the work that's been taking place over the last few months because we have COVID-19 supplies on here. You'll see masks and face shields and hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies that have been purchased. You see the furnishings and the completion of the ninth-grade centers. We've got textbook orders that are in here for our ELL textbook adoption for sixth grade through 12th grade, which is something that came to the board a little earlier in the spring semester. We have pre-K expenditures because we're moving right along with making sure that our classrooms are ready for our pre-K students as soon as it's safe for them to come back to school. And technology, you will see a lot of technology purchases on here. And so Mr. Adams alluded to earlier, the line he saw at Westville, you heard Mr. Miranda speaking about that as well. Well, these purchases that you see on here for these devices is what allowed us to have 24,000 devices ready to distribute to our students this week and next week. So that's what you see with a lot of the technology purchases that are, that are on this list. And so it is a long list, it's seven pages, but of course, if you have any questions, then we're certainly happy to answer those questions.
What's a gumdrop case?
A case for the, the Chromebooks.
Okay, I said that, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Just has a fun name. Okay, if there are no further questions, President Newhouse, that's the last item that I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. Any other questions or comments on the board? Then the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, and Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.076. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 8:47 PM. We will now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 9:31 PM. There are no motions from the closed session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. Madam President, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Winford Adams, that we adjourn the meeting. I will poll the board for their vote to adjourn. Winford Adams?
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Dana Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dawn Davis?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, aye. The motion carries unanimously. There are no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at 9:33 PM.